All right, uh, good evening, everybody. Um, tonight is Wednesday, September eighteenth. Uh, it's the monthly meeting of the school building committee. Um, I'd like to let everyone know what John McDonough is sitting in on this meeting. Uh, John was interested in helping us out possibly on the project and the, uh, permanent building committee. Um, he is a, uh, electrical engineer. Um, and I think would be a big asset to the town, um, for helping out on, uh, items on that end. Uh, we, he's gonna listen in tonight, and if we don't scare him off, um, hopefully he might join our committee and, and help us out. So, uh, John, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm John McDonough. Um, uh, Richard asked me to sit in on the meeting tonight to see how, uh, everything goes, get a, a sense of it. Uh, but I live right on Pleasant Street in Milis, number twenty-four. Uh, as Rich had mentioned, I'm, um, an electrical engineer, master electrician, uh, a building contractor, and a, uh, I was a lineman for a long time for a utility company as well. So, most of my experience is in the, uh, electrical area, mostly, uh, utility grade, um, type of work. So, that's nice to meet everyone.
Great, thank you. Jim, Jim, don't, don't scare him away, Jim.
Uh, Rich, Rich, can I interrupt you one second? Craig, should we open a, a meeting, a hearing? So, what, what do we do?
Yeah.
Call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'd like to call the select board meeting to order.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
Piece of cake.
All right, the first item on our agenda is, um, review design options.
Yeah, I, I was gonna just sort of set the table a little bit, and then I'm gonna hand it off to Chris, who's gonna run through. So, um, as, as we've talked about in the past, um, you know, we have, uh, some options from the PDP that are, we're still holding, but, um, in our back pocket, and we've been embarking upon uh, an evaluation of five other options. Um, a ten-year capital plan, that's sort of the do-nothing option, and planning out the next ten years of, of capital, um, maintenance projects, uh, or replacement projects. Um, then we have, uh, two, uh, renovations, one that's, um, um, fairly basic, and the, uh, uh, second one, which gets a little more, um, larger of a renovation for, uh, science. Um, then we've got two, uh, add-reno options. Uh, the first that adds, uh, a steam wing, and the second that adds a new gym and puts steam in the existing gym. So, those five options are what Chris is gonna walk you through. Uh, we're gonna talk about them, uh, from a programming and, and planning perspective first. Um, and then we're gonna get into the costs, which I'm sure everybody's anxious to see. Um, so, um, with that, I'm gonna share my screen, cuz, uh, Chris unfortunately wasn't able to be at his computer. So, let me just share this. And Chris, are you, uh, are you with us?
Yep. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, guys, and sorry for the no camera, but, um, we'll get through it, so. Um, all right, so as, uh, Mike had mentioned, uh, this first slide is just the recap of those uh, additional five uh, ideas or concepts that you guys had asked us to study, in addition to the three options that were being carried from the PDP, and basically were the, the core content of the PSR before we kind of uh, pumped the brakes a little bit, so. Um, so yeah, the ten-year plan just really addresses the future and ongoing capital needs. Um, and then the R2 was rolling that ten-year plan into one project, uh, all at once. And, uh, well, I guess it would actually be over a couple of years, but, um, in one capital plan project. Uh, only maintenance items. Um, R3 was then saying, let's take in a little bit more. Uh, try to grab a little bit more scope. I'll go through that in a second, and then the two additional renovations. So, um, Mike, you can go to the next slide. Um, so the ten-year plan, uh, we are showing it, um, as you see here. Um, what the goal was for us was to try and um, identify the, the various, uh, needs in in the sort of maintenance arena for the building. Um, but then spread them out in a way that could get you a long-range, um, trajectory that didn't require, uh, that, that sort of tried to stay away from some of the big-picture triggers in terms of, um, uh, the, the value of the work versus the value of the building and some of the code triggers that, um, we were looking at. And so, really, the last one is the biggest chunk of scope. It's the most money. Um, but it's all stuff that is sort of like, uh, like, uh, there's scope alike, and um, and, and so we, when we grouped those together, it came up with the price tag that was gonna force some of the other, um, things, like some ADA um, addressing and, um, other code, code things. But we went back and revised this a little bit from the last time you saw it after a conversation with John and reprioritized uh, a few things, like, the roof and windows probably need to come before we were showing them originally. So, this is a sort of revised look from the last time the committee saw it. And so, that's the ten-year plan. Um, and, and I won't really go in each item in individual, but we, we also, the previous time we thought we were starting it in twenty-twenty-five, and uh, you know, Vertex rightfully so said, you know, we probably wouldn't start any of this um, in twenty-twenty-five, and we need to give ourselves a realistic buffer for um, twenty-twenty-six, and so then we started the two, the two-year march from there, so.
And Chris, just can I jump in for a minute, just because the, if there's people at home watching, this is if the town decides to do nothing, we say, hey, we're not gonna do a thing to the school. These are the items that would have to be taken care of, um, because they're falling apart. Um, so, just so everyone knows, we did a, we did a, let's do nothing, um, and that's what this baseline is here.
Yeah, yeah, so, at some point, in some way, some form, all of these items are gonna be requested in a capital asset or capital maintenance, um, manner uh, to the town, and so this is kind of your outlay for, for that work. So, good point, thank you.
And just, just a question, in this staging like this, it never triggered that, um, I don't know what it was, thirty percent or thirty-three percent of the value? So, we don't have to do the code, the, the major upgrades that were required, and we do a, uh, we trip that threshold?
Uh, you don't have to until the end. That's the twenty-thirty-four one, which is the, the price tag gets a bit more there. And so, uh,
Compliance issues also.
Yeah, exactly. So, we were, we were saying we're shifting all of that to the end, because you wanna take care of it eventually, but you don't need to take care of it till you have to. And so, if you can wait till the end, and then bite that chunk later, um, and give you some time to build into it, so. Um, okay, you can go to the next slide, Mike. Okay, so, this is the, um, the AR3. So, the reason we didn't really show a slide for AR2 here is because AR2 would be exactly the ten-year plan, just all wrapped up into one package, all upfront. Um, we'll circle back to that in just a minute, um, in terms of pricing, but the, the, the plan ends up being that it's all the same plan. Um, it's the same floor plan, no real changes to anything except for the systems, um, and what's on that list that you just saw. So, AR3 is the first one that really is starting to manipulate some things on the inside of the building, and so when, uh, Vertex had circled back with the MSBA.
Just to be clear, Chris, you mean R3, not AR3, right?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I know it sounds technical, but it's, it's important.
It's, it is, it is, and I apologize. It's, it's R2, which is the same as the ten-year plan, and what we're looking at is R3. So, that is my bad, and thanks, Mike, for that. Um, so, R3 is the first one that starts to consider some changes to space. Um, and really, when Vertex went back to the MSBA and said, what are our options? Um, when, back in, uh, the spring. And they said, they indicated there was some willingness to work with the town on some sizes of rooms, and so most of your rooms were, were under the technical definition of space summary for the MSBA, but they said if you could prove out to us that you're still maintaining the safety factor, which is essentially boils down to a square foot per student, um, then we can have a conversation. And so, we went back to the district, found out what the average enrollments were for the science rooms, which are the most, uh, those are the biggest offenders on um, on space size. And I tried to identify spaces in the building that we could adjust, um, to make them appropriate in terms of safety for science rooms. And so, this this option is really saying, okay, we're gonna do all the systems upgrades, basically the entire ten-year plan um, in one go, but then to that, we're adding these science rooms, um, the adjusting of size, moving a couple walls for the science rooms, so that they are, they meet the MSBA's, um, safety requirements. And then also adjusting or taking care of some stuff in the gym, like the bleachers and things that are safety hazards, um, currently. And the real, the real kind of, um, point to make here is that, um, we think that this is the first option aside from the, the previous three options that you had on the table for a renovate, for renovation, add renovation, and new that we had at, sort of in the springtime. Um, when you had us relook at stuff, this R3 is the first one that we think is, um, something that could, could, is a big word, be viable in a conversation with the MSBA about getting funding, and that's no guarantee. We're not saying it is. I'm not saying it's not, but, um, this would have to be a conversation with the MSBA and some, some updates to the ed program to make this work for that. But this is, this is kind of the view, um, really, the biggest change here is the science room, so.
I just clarify that means that the ones you've already discussed would not comply and not be eligible for MSBA participation.
That would be my understanding. Um, typically, a renovation only, or, um, a maintenance plan-type project does not qualify for the state's core program. Um, the core program you're in right now.
They didn't rule it out entirely, Jim, that, you know, they said, come back, come back and show us what you're talking about, and then we can comment, right? But to Chris's point, as you see the yellows and greens here, these ones are, are improving the program area for students, and that's more compliant with their program. You know, where the R2 and, and even R1 are really just more renovating space and kind, and, and not necessarily upgrading it to current and appropriate standards, so. Okay, R3 is starting to, to make those movements in the right direction.
Thank you.
Um, Mike, you can go to the next slide. All right, AR, that is an AR5, I'm saying it correctly. So, um, AR5 is building, again, these were intended to be built sequentially on one another, so um, AR5 is taking that R3 scheme and then saying one of the big things out of the ed program and planning and visioning sessions was, um, this sort of core desire to have theme and STEM offerings within the building, which also expands some of the science, um, the science classrooms, and that is what we're trying to achieve here. Um, so, we're building in addition for uh, specifically geared towards steam and STEM and science, um, and sort of the making side of the curriculum that doesn't exist in the building right now. Um, it's an addition of about fourteen thousand nine hundred square feet. And, um, it, it still is sort of lacking in some ways to the MSBA's, uh, the purity of the MSBA's space template, but it does address the size and space concerns. It would require some um, modifications to the ed program. But this gets you a lot further down the road of getting to where, um, the desires of the school that were mentioned a lot, a long time ago in the, uh, visioning sessions and the, and the ed program. It does not really give you any additional um, like, it doesn't modify or change anything else inside the building, um, other than the science rooms, and so um, does give you some extra space, that's, and that's a good thing, um, but um, isn't as robust as, say, AR4A, which is the preferred, um, additional renovation scheme, um, that made it into the PSR, so. I will go to AR6, so you can go to the next slide. So, AR6 was one that we were trying to look at. Um, we've, we've had, we actually have another project similar to this in Walpole, where the strategy was to build a new filled house and then infill the gym with program, the existing gym with program, um, because uh, often building the large box shape of a gym can prove to be cost-effective, um, because there's less interior walls, there's less sort of branching of material of, um, ducts and, um, all the follow-on systems and stuff like that, so. Um, some equipment is more expensive, but, um, cost per square foot-wise, it can make some sense. And so, we wanted to study this one and see where we can get. Um, you can see in the core there, in that old gym, we were able to get um, five classrooms, uh, that are fourteen hundred square feet each, which is what the MSBA recommends for these spaces, or you could run it as four classrooms with a, um, with a common area breakout. Um, the sort of downside to this is that, um, the windows for these spaces would be up high. If you think about your existing gym, you have some openings up high that are like a cow wall, like translucent-type material, but we'd wanna replace those with actual windows. Windows would be up high, so it's not great for, um, sightlines to the outside, but it would bring some light in, and then we would try to get some skylights above to supplement for natural daylight, um, so that you don't feel like you're in a in a cavern, per se. But the big difference here, this is less, um, steam square footage, uh, in total. There's, um, there's basically five, uh, classrooms here. Mike, if you can go back one slide, just so they can see this as an illustration, and then in this one, you can see that there's essentially six rooms total with, uh, sort of larger steam commons breakout zone, um, which is some circulation and, and some, uh, some dedicated toilet rooms, because it's an addition off the end of the building, so we wanted to provide some facilities down there. Um, and then a small, uh, like, little meeting room there. So, the difference between the two is, uh, depending on how you ran the one in AR6, is really either one room or two rooms, and some of that common space, um, that is in the middle. And it's not inconsequential, so, um, from a steam and STEM perspective, this AR5 is probably a little bit of a nicer, um, steam and STEM suite. You can go to the AR6 one, um, in the next slide, Mike, and the AR6 has got some trade-offs, but I really think it still works, and I thought this was an interesting diagram for how to run steam and STEM and give some flexibility, even could, you know, branch into some kind of multipurpose space right there in the middle, so. Um, so those are the four new kind of studies that we'd been working on over the summer, and you can go to the next slide, Mike. Um, so, what?
Let's pause on design.
Okay, yep.
Can I ask a question? The, in the AR6, the five STEM and steam rooms are to be shared by both schools, correct?
Correct, and AR5 would be the same, I would presume, operationally. Yeah, they would both be shared.
Thank you.
So, we wanted to walk through the design presentations first, because it's your first go-around. Uh, you know, we, we provided to the images over the weekends. You guys had some time to kind of look at it and kick the tires, and so if there's any questions on the program, you know, we, we take those now, and then we'll get into the cost and, and schedules and things like that. Okay, so, there's no questions, then we can proceed on to the cost discussion.
Uh, I see Jim talking, but.
Tim talking?
Talking to himself again. Jeff, can you just opine for a minute or two on the value to the community and the residents in the building to code compliance? If we don't comply to code, what are we giving up?
Sure, uh, good question, Jim. Um, so the code compliance is to bring a building up to today's standards, and that means a lot of different things. That could be as simple as you know, the, a ramp has changed, what used to be an acceptable pitch is no longer the same acceptable pitch. It could be heights of handles, heights of fixtures and bathrooms. You know, you, you still have access to the things that are usable, but they're not the universal accessibility of what's been determined at this moment in time. That's a sliding scale, because you know, as, as we pass time, you know, ramps that were acceptable even ten years ago are different than they are today. And clearances around door handles have changed as well. And so, you know, I'd have to look at the individual components to say what we're, what we're losing by not being code compliant. And Chris may be able to comment more on that, but avoiding code compliance is something that, you know, most cities and towns do in the sense of, it, it can be a snowballing cost, and you're upgrading things for the sake of upgrading it to today's version of it, and not necessarily improving it that significantly. I don't know, Chris, if you wanna add anything or, or comment further on the code compliance?
Yeah, I don't, I, it's hard to say that you're losing something by not doing code compliance. I think, um, for things like, uh, some of the things Jeff just mentioned are actual ADA things. And you would take on some risk that if you, if you aren't in compliance, that someone could file a grievance, you know, and then you'd be forced to react. We, we have actually a district that um, someone in town, uh, just makes a habit of calling out all the town facilities that have some issue. And they're constantly chasing these things, um, just to be right by the letter of the code. Um, and so those things, I think you would definitely wanna do, just so you can mitigate some risk factors, but like, um, some of the the code compliant things, like, um, for instance, there's an update to some plumbing code things that just came out, you know, at the tail end of, uh, twenty-twenty-three. And you would be triggered by that at the end of this, but the implication is that it sort of increases some toilet counts in the building, so are you losing out by not having more restroom facilities in the building? Maybe, but I don't think you would ever say that you're losing out. You might have an identified shortage or lines or something like that, but um, I think it's just more of a risk thing, and how far do you kick the can down the road till it catches up with you at some point? Um, so I don't know that the loss factor is something that is, um, the thing here. It's just at some point, it could rear its ugly head, and then you would have to act really fast and come up with the scope of work and money to, to address it.
Well, so, uh, let me ask it again. Uh, what is the value to occupants? Not what are we avoiding, what's the value to them for the next thirty years, having this thing compliant?
I, I, I mean, operation, so like, it, some things are gonna be easier to use, some things are gonna be more, uh, universally, uh, you know, less aggravating, some things are gonna be like, in the nature of updating things to code, you're gonna have you're gonna address some wiring problems that are in the building that are just legacy from, um, wiring, so, uh, that's a benefit, um.
The fixed account may be higher, as Chris is saying, and that was the, that was the one that jumped up on us last year. So, even last year, the code changed, and jobs that were in design on the old code now needed to all of a sudden come up with a whole bunch of extra uh, unisex individual bathrooms, uh, because of the way the code changed. So, there you don't have to carve out additional spaces for these single occupancy bathrooms, as an example. Um, you know, we're adding sinks in classrooms that if you have a student with, you know, with physical needs, could now get to a lower counter than the typical high counter that were installed, you know, back in the sixties and seventies and eighties. So, you know, it, it makes it more convenient for some, but others won't notice the difference.
Okay, and I'll, just last thing is I'll add life safety too, like, the fire alarm standards and sprinkler standards and stuff like that are, are always changing and updating. And, you know, now they're different than they were in the old days, and so you could argue that it's creating safety for buildings. I mean, that's the whole intent of code changes, is to make safer for buildings, so.
Yeah, and there's a lot of good stuff in there, too. I don't wanna boo-boo with it, you know, we're just avoiding spending money, right? There are a lot of benefits of it, uh, and it, and it runs the gamut, as Chris is alluding to.
Yeah, I would, I would think that ADA and life safety code compliance is something we should strive for, you know, and even if we're not pushed into it, but some of the other items that might be nice to have, like bathroom counts that were off by one for code or something, maybe not. But, but as you get into ADA and life safety issues, fire and sprinkler and things like that, I'd I think that should be one of the goals we, we try to achieve.
Yeah, and you can certainly pick and choose, Craig, you know, great points. I mean, you know, you know, we, we can understand, you know, the design team can put forth all the code triggers that you may or may not hit, and you can choose to push some forward that are good to have and improve the safety of the building, and then avoid the ones that are a marginal benefit, you know, such as adding a lamp over the elevator or changing the height of which you push the elevator button, that you know, those are recent changes that, you know, you have to comply with once you start to trigger these things. Any other questions on scope or? Not seeing any other humans, there is. Um, I'll turn it back to Chris in a second, but I just, you know, we, we put this slide up here on purpose, because we really want you to understand this is rough order and magnitude costs. Um, they're based on these cartoons that you've seen tonight, uh, and in the meeting packet, which are, you know, a floor plan layout. You know, we've not drawn, the design team has not drawn duckwork runs, or riser runs, or done real takeoffs of individual components. So, they've, Tape's estimator has done a first pass at this, and then we've layered a range on that. You know, as we tighten this scope up, we'll get a, a reformation of those costs. But we wanted to first get this in front of you tonight with a range, and you can understand it, and if there are options, it makes sense to keep, uh, focusing on. You know, we'll tighten up the numbers around those individual options. Um, but we wanted to bring this back to you tonight. Um, site work in the second bullet, there's an example that, you know, because you asked us to start with the ten-year plan, then build on that to the R2, and build on that to the R3, there's hardly any site works in those costs. Um, but as you get to the ad rent, now we're starting to disturb area and add building square footage and change circulation, so we're starting to add more site work costs. But that's not an exact science either. We haven't presented that to you or decided whether that's the right layout, um, that it wants to be, or the right place to put parking. And so, again, the range applies here, because this is your first look at it. And there may be other things that are, need to have that you see, right? We took the rent out from a minimalist standpoint, but there are things that make life easier, um, that could be added into any of these as you start to go through the process with us and talk about the options. All right, so I'll turn it back to Chris to continue on with this discussion.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Um, you can go to the next slide, Mike.
One thing, can I jump in before you start, Chris? Um, to follow up on the last part, in the do-nothing plan, the, when they go to look at those numbers, there was no modular space put in there, and there was a concern from the school that we, we might need that, so that would be another of the, hey, we're not gonna do anything to the school other than the absolute necessary repairs. There's still a missing component in that number when we get that far.
Thanks, Chris. Um, all right, so, as Jeff said, we're ki- kinda giving you ranges, so you can get an order of magnitude on these, um, the deferred maintenance plan, as we'd shown it before in that outline. Um, we're, we're estimating that the construction cost for that overspread out over the ten years would be the thirty-five to forty-two million. Um, and then the estimated project cost, so, it, just as a refresher, when you get to project cost, you have to add in things like soft cost, the soft cost items, which are um, engineering fees and, uh, you know, furniture, moving, um, you know, contingencies, all of the, the kind of stuff that pads up into the, uh, overall project cost, and it's a bit higher here, because you've got a longer duration, which means you need more attention for a longer period of time from uh, your teams, and it's broken out. So, you're gonna be doing multiple packages and fits and starts, and so that soft cost is gonna be uh, a bigger hit to you, uh, over the course of this ten years. Um, we're gonna go into each year, so you can get a sense on which, uh, how that breaks down, and I, and I'll try not to go too far into depth, cuz you've had this material, and you, you have, have the opportunity to look at it. Um, and we'll just kind of do the highlights.
Hey, Chris, yeah. Sorry, can you, just based on what Rich's last comment, um, on terms of the, if we had to add modulars, i- is there a ballpark on what that is at? Five million, two million, ten million?
Just, it, it could be all of those numbers, honestly. So, it's, the, the reality is, when you it's hard for us to tell you what the exact result of modulars is, or what's needed, without sitting down with you guys and kind of going into depth on, um, on, on how the phasing and, and like, what you're willing to deal with and what you aren't in terms of moving kids. In terms of moving kids around and doing the work. Um. The deferred maintenance plan, when Tape and Vertex put this together. Um, we didn't. Include modulars because we thought we could do the work in certain sort of certain sequences. That if you carefully consider them. Um, and have a premium for bidding, um, maybe you can do with without, but we've heard the comment, we know it's there. And frankly, that's partly the reason for doing these these ranges, because. If it's not a ton of, um, if it's not a ton of modulars. It's probably going to fit within these ranges. But if you guys say we want to release a whole floor and we don't want to deal with it. And we got to get, you know, eighteen or twenty modulars on site to to handle the students. Um, then that's going to affect the number upwards. So.
One last thing, that the deferred maintenance plan has no MSBA. So this is all coming out of Milas's pocket. And it would also have to be bid, if it was a ten year. It would have to be probably be bid, gone gone to town meeting or funded over the ten years. So there's. There's the chance for inflation. Um, there's a bunch of different things that could happen to this.
Yeah, what the, did you bake a cost escalator into this going out to ten years?
Yeah, so let's, let's, uh, let's go to the next slide, um, Mike, so you can kind of see how each of these are baked in. So. Um, so this is, uh, two years from now, right? Twenty twenty six, we're saying. This scope of work has line item costs, right? So roof replacement is. Two point eight million, that's our estimate. Um. In in what, how you do estimates, as you say, you project out, you use today's dollars. And you project out to what you are thinking when the start is um by doing an escalation, which is down towards the bottom. And you say, uh, these are real time numbers that we're having right now, but we're escalating out. Uh, two years, which uh, most estimators are saying. The rest of this coming year is about four percent and then they're starting to see the the forecast is. The escalation percentage is dropping as we get a little bit more in the future and. Um, it more to where it normally was historically before this sort of. Twenty one to twenty four range, uh, twenty twenty one, twenty four range. Um, so you can see down here that we're saying. Your subtotal of direct cost would be somewhere around four point eight million, call it. And then we have markups, which is the cost for the GCs to do the work. Um. And, uh, yeah, there are markups on all of that. And then you escalate everything. To the two years and then you come up with your sort of uh estimated construction cost. Uh, for this scope of work. Um, two years from now. And that's the seven point six million and then you have to add the forty, the forty percent. Um, soft cost on top of that. Um, and that's how you do these budgets, right? So each one of these. As we go through the next few slides. Um, is basically its own little project. And so you're doing a series of. Um. You're doing a series of five, basically five projects over the next ten years. That have their own discrete scope and in a package and you're trying to. Sort that out as you go. Um. Does that make sense, everybody?
How we're doing that? Is this going to keep us under the thirty percent?
Uh, currently, this one does, yes.
Okay.
Um. Okay, let's go to your, the next one.
Can I just stop you for one second? Because I want to understand the sequence. For, to go back to the previous, previous slide. So I'm going to say this and Craig and or whomever, tell me if I'm where I'm wrong. Based upon this, we would go to the town meeting. Assuming there's no debt exclusion. And this fits under the, you know, the debt ceiling, which I'm, I don't know whether it would. We would say to the town in. February of twenty twenty six. We want you to appropriate. Borrow. Ten point six million dollars. To do this work, the roof, the windows, et cetera, et cetera. Is that the way this would work?
I I believe that way it would work and I think that. I mean, it fits under that what we would call the debt ceiling. In other words, it'd be allowed to borrow that much money.
Right.
But making interest payments on ten million dollars over thirty years when you're going to tack another. I'm going to jump ahead and guess.
Yeah.
Million dollars two years later and then another eight million dollars two years later. Eventually, I eventually and probably right off the get go, this is a debt explosion.
Yeah.
I mean, that I got feeling on it. I was looking for an old worksheet I had where I could figure payments and stuff, but I. Can't seem to find that at this moment.
But this is over the. Um, thirty percent based on the current valuation of the building.
I would, I wouldn't get to, I wouldn't get to, um. To dial in on that specific component because I think these numbers are not. Um, th- th- this is giving you some ballpark ranges and so. I think it's within an order of magnitude factor that we can. We can probably hone in if this is how you want to do it, right? And so that's.
Yeah, right now, we're, right now, we're looking big picture. So it it's a valid, valid point. It may be, you know, uh, above the thirty percent, but I think what Chris is saying is right now, we're looking at big picture. When we start to get, if we get make decisions or start to get closer, then they'll hone in on it, which will get us better numbers.
Okay.
Uh, you want to look at yours? The next one? Mike, okay, thank you. Uh, so. Uh, potentially, we can go a little. I mean, you've seen the scope of work up at the beginning in that schedule. It's, those are brought down here with the values um for. For each of the, each of the items. Um, again, we reshuffled these a bit. In a conversation with John and so. Um. That. That may be, um. Why some of these appear to be over that sort of thirty percent threshold, because when we did it as an engineering team. We were making sure we weren't. Getting even close to that until the very end. But when we reshuffled with John, some of them went up, some of them went down. And so there just may be another third conversation that says if this is really how you guys want to proceed. Um, maybe there's like half the windows or something like that. So anyway, but this is. This is addressing power, um, which has been, um, brought up as a concern in the building. Um, and. You know, same, same drill here. You've got the escalations, you've got the soft cost and everything and you're seeing yourself somewhere around uh five million dollars. For this particular scope. Uh, Mike, you can go to the next one, I think. Uh, so twenty thirty was a a light year. Not much work going on. Um, and so this was just the sequence how it landed when we talked with John. Um, so you've got the gym air handling units, the air can be, uh. A lot of mechanical stuff is happening on this one. And, um, again, markups, escalation, all of that has a real factor and you can see here that. When you look at, when you do this stuff and you start to get six years out, like you're starting to see the effect that. Markups and escalation have when you start compounding this stuff over a period of time. Um, your base scope of work is, you know. Estimated to be somewhere around three hundred fifty thousand dollars, but when you wait. A long period of time. Um, you're going to pay a lot more money for that. So. Um, that's kind of what you should see as a subtext in this exercise is that when you wait a very long time to do this stuff, you pay more for it. Over time. Um, so. Um. So, Mike, if you want to go to the next one?
And Jim, this is the one where maybe you could use existing funds to cover it.
Right. Um. Alright, so this one was doing the the boiler replacement and some secondary, uh, sort of. Wiring on BMS and controls. Um, and then starting to look at some plumbing fixtures, um, not necessarily increasing counts. But changing. The dilapidated, broken, old facilities, um, and adding some things that are code required. Um, while you're at it, like backflow protection and, um, things like that. Uh, again, markups escalation, you arrive at, um. Uh, at around seven million dollars. So, um, and then the last one is year ten. And that's the sort of big chunk of work that, um. Mike, if you want to go to the next slide. Um, that's the big chunk of work that is, you know. Twenty. Seven million dollars in total project cost at the end there to get. Through all of these items. Um. So. Um. So that's the ten year plan unfolded. Um, so you can kind of see each year. And for comparison, you can go to the next slide, Mike. This is the R two, um, scheme. Um, so while you're. Drawn out. Cost and over ten year period could be. Um, somewhat less, the the big difference in. The cost of this one and the ten year plan. And when you roll it all up. This scheme, R two, actually has all of those upgrades up all up front and it starts to address some of the things related to, um. Like getting more into the the weeds of things like ductwork and. Um, branches of different services. And so the big cost difference between this and the ten year plan. Is that, um, ten year plan, you're kind of addressing. Um, the end peripherals, if you say, if if you will, um. Word versus in this plan, we're actually going more surgically deep by addressing like actual pipes and. Um, actual ductwork and, you know, in that you got to change. Some ceilings to get there or some walls to get like the inside of the gut stuff. Uh, but you're not changing the floor plan, you're just sort of having to surgically get to things. And so the big difference in cost here. Um, is that when you roll it into one project, you you address more holistically. All of this stuff instead of doing it piece mill and Band-Aid. Um, and so that's the difference here of, uh, of the cost. Um.
And does this make us eligible for reimbursement or not?
I think as, as, uh, Jeff had said earlier, I don't think the MSBA is completely. Tossing you out, but in my experience, um. The renovations tend to be. Um. I don't know, I I would say, I would say it's, yeah, uh, yeah, they're open.
They're open to a conversation on both the renovation options, but we have to show that. The ratio of students per classroom doesn't jeopardize their baseline safety protocols. That may mean. As an example, that may mean either, you know, making class sizes smaller and adding educators. You may lose some specials because you never didn't add space to add those, change those ratios. So there were some trade offs, uh, Diane, that he, we have to really look at with Bob. And his operations, he's getting us. The breakdown of the classrooms that have the higher uh ratio of students and then we can look at. Some of the spaces that would displace them. Too, and what we would lose in that displacement. So it's, it's an open conversation, but we would need Bob to fill in some of the. The thoughts there.
Great, thank you, Jeff. And Chris.
Chris, can you speak a little bit more about the difference between? You referenced it as like the surgical scenario, surgical. Pieces that you'd look at in this. It it kind of sounds to me, and I I could be wrong, which is why I'm asking a question, that. The ten year plan. Would do, would get us to a certain level, but we'd in essence be. Hunting other needed work. Either farther out or just hoping it didn't. That that R two. It's kind of like does the whole, really does what really needs to get done. My.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's. That's kind of correct. Um, the, so let me just give you an example is that when we talk about. Um, unit vents or air handlers or stuff like that, we're changing things on the end of. A system. That can still deliver, the system can still deliver things to these end peripherals. And so we're saying. We can change those, um, and it, and it's. Far more disruptive and to Rich's point about modulars and stuff, the reason we kept them out of. The tenure plan was because you're, you're being a little bit more selective about. Changing the end of the line and the equipment that's on the end of the line. Versus. In this kind of scheme, a renovation scheme all wrapped up into one. We would be saying, we're changing the unit vent on the end of the line, but we're also changing the ductwork because the ductwork with new systems. Can change and sometimes it just needs to, like, it needs to be new. Uh, a lot of the ductwork in there is original to the building. And, um, if we can find more efficient ways to run or line ducts so that they're. Um, they run more efficiently or quietly and stuff like that. That's the kind of thing you'd be replacing. In this scheme, but. You could live with. If you're just going to do a ten year plan, you're not going to go replace some of these big things. That's just how you maintain your building anyway. You know what I mean?
Yeah, so, so to, so some of the conversations have been had in some of the meetings of kind of. Truly putting Band-Aids on things and then doing things. The right way. Would would it be fair to say that like? Basically, the tenure plan is designed to. Do truly a bare minimum to do what we do, but if we were really to renov, just renovate the building, but do it. Quote unquote, the right way, really, it's R two.
That would be my opinion, yeah.
Yeah, R two and beyond. Like, you know, like with the ten year plan, and. You're fixing the things that. Give you creature comforts, right? Making sure it works at the end, but. You're also waiting for one day when you, the ceiling tile starts to leak because of the pipe leaking and then you're individually going in and replacing all those pipes. Because a joint let go because it's fifty years old, as an example. And so. You're kind of more reactive with the ten year plan. You're, you're fixing the critical things, but you're, you're allowing the other stuff to essentially. Fail or end up in its own, you know, sequence of uh years beyond the ten years to make sure you start to search to replace those broken elements.
Yeah, I, my comment is. For the ten year plan, what would it be like? For a sixth grader who goes into that school September twenty six, what would the life of that student be like over that period of time? You know, construction all the time? Uh. Systems at risk all the time. I mean, I'm not trying to paint the dire picture, but I'm just trying to figure it out from the point of view of the students entering that school.
Yeah, definitely impacted, um, you know, construction would. You know, there's too much here to do in what we call a summer slammer, right? This is not two and a half months worth of work. Alright, this is two and a half years with the work. And so you're going to span that over that time. What what the modulars allows you to do. Is to take a bank of six classrooms offline at a time. But eventually that bank of classrooms in the middle of a hallway, right? So you have class happening on either side of this bank of six. That are offline while you're renovating, you know, jackhammering, hammering out, you know, installing ductwork. You know, it's annoying the operation. Certainly you got to work around MCAS and some of those more critical things. You know. This range with all the R twos and, you know, and even more the ten year. We didn't dial in the window replacement, right? You know, do you want to do that second shift when kids are not there? You were, you come in, teachers leave, they take all the stuff out away from the outside wall. They abate and replace one room at a time at night. But you're paying the premium to have off hours work and floodlights and things like that. So there are. There are trade off costs that can tick that price up or down depending on your pain level. Right? What you're willing to put the students through, through those renovations.
Yeah, and I think to your point, Jim, you know, what's the experience for the kid? It's all that construction and. All the time we're doing it for for that ten year period. It's just, we get our fingers crossed that. These systems. Go well beyond their. Expected life.
Yeah, Jeff, I have a quick question. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, uh. I kind of agree with Jim as far as what the life of a student would be. For that ten years. But beyond that. Uh, and there are people on this committee that. Know a lot more about town politics and town meeting politics than I do. But number one, I think. To go back on a ten year plan, to go back basically. You know, every so often, every year, every two years, whatever it is. It's kind of like going to the dentist every week for a month. And, um. I I'm not sure how that would fly. Do you guys, have you guys done any projects like this? Under these circumstances, a, a five or a ten or a fifteen year plan?
Uh, Tape. Tape hasn't done one. Like that. I think a lot of times. We have helped districts out as they. You know, try to. Ask the MSBA for, like, put their SOI in year, every year, every year. And they say, but we have some pressing needs. Can you think about that with us? And and we will. Um, but. I I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to lie and I'm not trying to paint a bad, a, a, a dark picture either, but. A ten year plan is going to be a painful process for you. Uh, both from a funding perspective, but from an execution perspective. It's just going to be painful and I think you got to understand that that's a painful. Avenue to take, but it may be the only one you can take and that's, that's fine. We just, you just got to know what it is, you know. avenue to take, but it may be the only one you can take and that's that's fine. We just, you just gotta know what it is, you know?
The other thing I I wanted to mention was, uh I heard somebody earlier mentioned life safety. And I see uh fire alarm work in the year of twenty thirty six, I think it was. And um what what what's the fire alarm situation in that building now?
It's functional. It's just like we found some things that were uh remnants of the past. We found boxes that no one knew what they did or what they were for. There's old wiring, there's new wiring. And and so we need to be careful, like your building is not unsafe. Right? I I don't want that to be the sort of alarm bell ringing, no pun intended, but it's it's not that it's unsafe, it just is that it any work we do needs to be code compliant. So if you replace a window, window is gonna be code compliant for energy code, stuff like that. But there are better systems out there for fi- for for uh emergency response, including things like uh just emergency management, like uh active shooters or incident response or mass notification or things like that that help occupants know what to do in an emergency. And right now I would I would say most of your systems are very analog. Um and it's not that it doesn't work and it and what it doesn't keep students safe, but there are really, really intelligent ways that these things work now and and it um and and that's kind of the rosy picture for the future. So I don't want you to think your kids are unsafe. That's not the story. The story is it can be better.
Okay, I was just making my notes on it too, basically exactly what you said. Going back five times, four times, five times to town meeting to ask for between, I don't know, what was it, between um the low one was a billion bucks up to, you know, twenty seven million, going back five times to keep asking is crazy. I mean, one of them gets shut down and you're just you're you're off target, off path, and that's too risky, I think. Um and um I I I'd go back to that uh that code compliance, what if it was all voted at once and it wasn't done over ten years, but it was done quicker? And I know that's where we started. But stretching out over ten years with five individual votes guarantees us that we're going to get um going to the dentist every week for a month. And nobody's gonna want that. Oh, I don't want that.
Can I can I propose that we uh, cause this is all really good conversation. I I wanna maybe quickly get through these other picture and then it's it's all good. So i- is that okay if I do that real quick?
Yeah, go ahead. We'll hold our comments to the end.
Okay, well, you don't have to hold them. I just wanna get you the full detail and then and then that'll give you the 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 full picture that you already kind of have. But um okay, so R three again, is the the look at Mike, if you can slip, there you go. This is the look at a little bit more robust renovation on the inside, addressing the science rooms, getting better space uh ratios there. And you can see the highlighted might on this slide is the one that we're sort of the first one that and again, Jeff has been very clear. MSBA has not ruled out any of the options. I'm just writing, I wrote might on this slide because I think it is the one that is more clearly attempting to address the things that the MSB has said they're they're actually wanting us to address. So so that's this one and it's, you know, total project in the range of eighty one to one hundred. But if you do get the MSBA reimbursement, it brings it back down into the stratosphere of one of the other options without MSBA reimbursement, right? So you're getting a little bit more further with uh the other people's money. AR five, if you wanna go to the next slide. Is again that add renovation and adds that steam space on there. This does also address the MSBA's concerns on some space some space issues on the inside. And uh you're starting to look at uh sort of nine uh hundred million plus on this project. And you know, that's, those are real numbers, so. I think uh kind of keep going, AR six is uh the gym adding the gym instead of adding the steam, but then infilling the steam into the existing gym. Mike, if you can go that slide for me, that'd be good. And that one is it it's slightly less money. Um and this is you know, again, it's a grain of salt, it's a sort of order of magnitude, but this sort of illustrates that for slightly less money. The gym space building that um does prove out to be, you know, s- somewhat of a financial benefit, but it might not be the program benefit that you're looking for on the steam and stem. Mike, you can go to the next one. So this is that pulled out summary slide that shows all of those numbers and options that you just looked at and shows them zoomed out so you can kind of get a a lay of the land there um and understand understand what we're talking about. And then for reference, we included on the next slide, we included the previously thought about and where we landed on the previous round of PSRs. Um so you'll notice that the the R one here is in the same ballpark as the R two R three kind of range that we were looking at before. So so those numbers kind of confirm one another that you know, you're doing some different scopes, but they're they're kind of all in the same ballpark. Um and then AR four A, which was actually um putting more of an addressing the middle school component and separating the schools had an even bigger chunk of money relative to what you're adding in terms of the AR five, AR six. Um but that one really does address all of the things that the school was wanting and um gives you kind of that clear picture and then the N one is uh way off on the end of the scale, so.
Could you do us a favor, Jeff? Could you go back one? Mike, could you go back one slide? Um so on that one, uh Mike, uh or sorry, Jeff. Uh so on the ones that the MSBA might contribute to. You know, so we're right now, we're looking at the R two at uh seventy four to ninety three. If the and that one would be, that one, did we determine that one would be MSBA?
For the the top, the top one wouldn't, ten year, that's on the town, hundred percent phased over. The bottom two, I think, would.
If we took that number, okay, cause right now if we if we did nothing, it could be, let's say, let's say fifty eight, let's say, okay? If the R two and R three and the MSBA contributed to that, that would bring the 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 high end number down, correct?
No, those are the two, those they said, they're only R five and six are really
Five and six are more clearly follow the spirit of the program, right? I think we we have greater certainty that those are those would be more likely eligible. The R two and R three we really have to look at the student ratio and understand what gets displaced. Cause you're not adding any square footage, so for Bob to bring the ratios down, something's gonna have to go.
What I'm trying to get to is 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 the, so the one twenty one of AR five, if we get a contribution from the state that would bring that number that the town would have to contribute down to a number. So I I what I'm trying to say is say, we could have basically nothing for fifty eight. Or we could have AR five, which has more, and that would be some number, which would be more than fifty eight, but it'd be less than a hundred and twenty one.
Do we know the number? Do we know the contribution?
We have to, not yet, Alan. So the the Rubik's Cube, if you will, is multi-layered, right? So in a natural progression of this process. Bob and his team drafted an ed plan that said, this is how we teach kids in our town. These are the spaces that were short and these are the spaces we need. And these are our ratios. That's what we submitted back in the spring and then we halted the process to look at these peeled back layers. And what we need to do now is then match that up with Bob's peeled back ed plan and make sure we didn't lose anything that's necessary, right? Cause then that's a trigger for the MSBA to say, well, with R two you lost your music room as an example, and now you can't deliver music because you need that for these reduced classroom sizes. So you, you know, you may find that R two doesn't get you there. But AR five, you're net adding space. So that's why with AR five and AR six, I feel good that you can meet those needs because you're getting the program, might not line up exactly. But by adding, you know, five classroom spaces you're relieving, you know, some of the trade offs and the pinch points that are there when you have no space in R two and R three. Yeah, and I I was just looking at um the override workbook that we've got, you know, where you can put in a number and see what the cost would be for the average homeowner. You know, the the ten year plan, if you add it all up, and I didn't run it each year, but if those are overrides each year, it's gonna be approaching nine hundred dollars over the life of each of those five overrides. And um it'll phase in, you know, because you'll start with the first one and you'll add the next one and it'll phase out in the year thirty. But R three is really where the if if they'll participate in R three, that's the point where it crosses to be about the same cost as the ten year phased one. If R three has participated at at a price similar to what they gave us for Clyde Brown, and and a lot of ifs there, I'm not gonna talk about the number, but it starts to get to a point where it is no more expensive to do R three than to do the tenure plan for the taxpayer if the state contributes. You know, to that one. So that's the big F. That's what we need to find out.
But I I also think using, and I know what we're trying to do, but using the tenure plan based on the discussion we just had. I question whether ten year, the tenure plan is really the is truly the cost of doing nothing. I think the cost of doing nothing is really R two.
Right. And and I would say probably R two is the most expensive to the taxpayer. Because there'll be no participation from the state at all. And um and and it does, and so so you're gonna be paying all of it ourselves. Whereas when you get to R five and R six, you know you've got some level of participation. So those are gonna be less costly because the state will be kicking in money. Kind of ironic, but you know.
Well, I mean, we're talking about before we did, you know, thirty to forty percent reimbursement. Let's be optimistic and forty percent reimbursement cost you end up costing us seventy two million.
Right, exactly. That's what I did. I ran a forty percent reimbursement in the tax rate.
So I mean, in terms of value you get much more value for AR six than you do for the ten year plan, which I agree with Mark's comments. I mean, that's really speculative as to whether or not you can even achieve that. And I realize you guys are making a very conservative estimate. I I don't doubt the numbers at all. But a ten years. Holy mackerel, I mean.
I I just doubt our ability to go year after year after year to town meeting and ask for money and not get thrown out of town.
I question our ability to get this work done in ten years. I mean, it's crazy, the first if the first piece falls behind, which it will that's gonna kick it down to fifteen to twenty years. No question about it.
Yeah, and how would you like to be a sixth grader going into that building?
There are a lot of ways to dial in cost to, which is why I did the range, like examples, like, you know, the the soft cost includes furniture. Right? You know, you can, we can inventory all that stuff and, you know, push towards the lower end of all these scales, the more stuff you reuse as an example. But then there are other stuff that why the ratio goes down with even with a cheaper project, you've got to pay the insurance for the renovation cycle, right? You're you're paying that based on the square footage of the building. So that's the same no matter how much you're renovating. Right? And so therefore, that's why the multiplier goes down a little bit, you know, from forty to thirty five down to thirty three. And there's ways to, you know, to trim those things further, but it's really about what does the space look like when you're done, right? Did you just breathe life into the things that were going to fail? Or did you actually make a marked improvement uh in some of the science or other spaces that were were short, right? And so those are the things to consider here.
Yeah, Jeff, I had a question. You know, you talk about furniture and things like that. The um, how about technology i- in these these scenarios, is it, would it just be the technology in the science rooms would be?
No, we would include some, but that's another area we could dial it back, Bob. Like I you know, to to come up with the the thirty five percent, I I mocked up a a typical project budget to see what it would come out at and, you know, the MSBA caps technology at twelve hundred dollars a student. So that's what I plugged in there. But for furniture, and that's what you guys spend, you spend a little more than that on Clyde Brown. But on furniture, you spend closer to like two grand, and so I put like two grand in there, you know, average per student. You know, you could live with less, right? If we take off whole rooms like a calf, what we don't need to renovate or other things, you can kind of start to knock that number down. Which helps with the ratio of how much the MSBA gives you compared to the overall cost, right? If you get close to all their individual ceilings and thresholds for the similar amount of work, you know, the ratio looks better to the taxpayer because you're getting more value, uh you know, from a ratio standpoint. So we can play with all that and really dial it in once you kind of know big picture, you know, what you want this thing to look like at the end.
Thank you.
And just for the group's consideration, now that we've had the numbers for the additional options that we had asked the team to take a look at. How do folks feel about taking this slide and adding in the original AR four to it, just for part of future consideration discussions as this group talks? Because there there are there are large parts of the educational plan. I would argue than extremely large parts that aren't addressed in any of these actions. But are addressed in AR four. I know we asked Yeah, that's right, that's right. So just just for what the totality of options that we might consider as we keep discussing. I know that we got the numbers for reference purposes. I do think that there is some validity to putting AR four A into the discussion onto this slide. So we have one slide that has options that we'll just openly continue to talk about.
And just speaking as one of the authors of the ed program, uh you know, these options on this slide. The ed plan would have to be seriously scaled back. Just, you know, some of the main components of the the ed program were, you know, creating two distinct schools. Having collaborative space in in all teams in the middle school and subject uh disciplines in the high school. You know, and and you know, take adding on to the science rooms is, Jeff mentioned it before, taking away from some other classrooms that are, you know, already below the MSBA you know, space template. So, you know, personally as superintendent, I I would like to see you know, AR four A included in the discussion.
And I think another component too is if we're considering spending this much money. Do we spend this much money to get fifteen more years out of a building? Or do we spend this much money to get thirty five, forty years out of a building? So so maybe we do from a roof and like systems perspective. But from an educational perspective, we're still extremely far behind.
Right, the AR four would A would give us the, it would give us the updated building and it would also update the educational program, which was the original goal of this whole project. Um and then like I, like you were, like everyone was saying is when you look at the numbers altogether, although the numbers are large. Uh you know, i- in the big picture, it's not that much more than some of the other options, especially with the with the the uh MSBA's contributions.
Yeah, it's that MSBA contribution point that makes all the difference in it. I mean, really, if you start out by just saying that it eight hundred and fifty bucks per household to do the ten year plan. And it gets up to twelve hundred bucks per household to do you know, the 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 big one, the one, uh what is it, four A that everybody's talking about? It's that delta. It's not that you're going from zero to twelve hundred, you're going from eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and sixty to twelve hundred. And that's the point to consider. I mean, you get
Point to consider. I mean, you get nothing for eight hundred and fifty dollars per household. And you get something spectacular for four hundred. Four hundred fifty, four hundred more, yeah.
But Craig, you're eight hundred on R three. Is that assuming there's state aid? Because that's questionable.
No, that's paying all of it ourselves. That would be us paying all of it, no state aid at all for, uh, oh, R three? Uh, I'm sorry, I started with the ten year plan is what I was talking about, the baseline ten year plan with no state aid. Costs about eight hundred and fifty per taxpayer per household. Um, R four is like twelve hundred per household. Yeah, ballpark, gotta run the right numbers, but it gets you in the ballpark for it. It's really that differential, you know, going from that fifty eight to one thirty seven. With one thirty seven being the uh forty percent discounted, you know.
I I don't think we should say that it's eight hundred, because that's based on what median house value? I mean, it's going to be a lot different depending on your value.
Oh, yeah, it always is. But I mean, that's, I'm so this is raw numbers. You're going to go from fifty eight thousand for the ten year plan. With no reimbursement. And let's say we get a forty percent reimbursement.
Right.
To eighty two thou- eighty two million is the cost for us. And you're just paying the difference on that um on that fifty eight to eighty two.
So your point is your incremental cost in terms of taxpayers maybe thirty percent more. Maybe.
Maybe.
To get terrific. To get a hundred. You get a hundred percent better value. You spend, I I'm just making this up, but I mean. It's hard to, it's hard to go to the taxpayer and put in tell tell, on my view, tell them the ten year plan is a good idea. Very difficult to do.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, we we didn't say that the ten year plan was a was a good idea. What we said was, the feedback that we got was. There was a lot of hesitancy to proceed with anything. So what we said was, okay, we don't do a thing. And we, this is what the cost of doing nothing is.
Right. Agreed, sorry, very well stated.
It's called leverage, Jim.
Yeah, I know what it's called.
Okay, good.
Yeah, R five, six, and A four just get you so much more value. For a very low incremental cost.
And I think it goes back to what Jim said earlier. What's what's the value to the occupants for the next thirty years?
All right, Chris, did you have anything else that you uh wanted to follow up on this just before we, since we jumped in on there?
I don't, I'm good. Um, and I actually have to get off in like about. Five or ten minutes anyway, so I was just observing, but I thi- this is a great conversation and. Um, and I'll just be quiet until I need to go, but um I appreciate the time to let us present it, so.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. So what are the next steps, Rich?
That would be Jeff.
What are they? Give me the next steps. No, I mean, like, you know, this this dialogue was the critical part of it, right? To really understand. The full gamut, and that's part of the narrative that needs to go back to the public, right? Well, you know, because. The option on the the slide that was after that showed, you know, AR four A, um, you know, it's a hundred and forty seven million, and then the the all new construction at one sixty two. Because people in town are still going to ask about that, even if you pick the most value. They're going to say, well, you know, I support athletic fields. Like, why didn't you give me the whole kit and caboodle, right? But that's in the minority, but we, I think showing the gamut of the ten year. To the renos, to the AR five, six, to the one that's idealized, and then the. Go for everything, right? You know, is part of the conversation that will always happen in every town. And so I think having those all together as you guys kind of narrow is important. And I think, you know, showing the public that you did the diligence that you're talking about here is critical, right? Like, because you're, everyone's going to second guess. Any decision you make. Because that's what people do, right? They they show up right before town meeting, they said, you never consult me, even though you had a dozen meetings. And they they pick their option as their their best option. So I do think it's important to educate the public though, uh, and so, you know, I I think, you know, we don't need to whittle any options tonight, and we gave you a lot of information. Uh, so, but I do want to have a couple of meetings in the month of October. Where we start to really compare and contrast these options. Uh, for all the reasons that were stated tonight about value and about what you're getting for those options. I think that's, I think that's critical overall. And and I think it's important to do kind of as you're leading to your fall town meetings, so to get the word out there that you're looking at these varied options. Right? Because I think that's important for the public to understand that you took this very serious and you can't, you recommended option X. Because it was the happy medium of everything you considered, and here's why. But I think getting that information out there is important. So Mike's put on the screen here, uh, is kind of a, uh, what we call the work plan. Kind of starts to talk about the meeting cadence and what we're doing here. Um, so Mike, you want to walk the group through um what the timeline is?
Yeah, so what we've been working with, um, um, with the exception of the summer with with TAP A is developing sort of a. A sequence of of meetings where we're meeting regularly with TAP A. We then uh meet with the working group to bounce um some ideas off of them and then subsequently presented here at the SBC meeting. Um, so we've put some dates together. Um, working with TAP A and also some uh topics for each of those meetings. Um, starting with um tonight's meeting. Um, going through the options, the cost estimates, uh, the work plan, and then our 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 discussion later on community engagement. Um, so, and we color coded these just so it's it makes it clear. Um, essentially, we've got um. Um, you know, green uh is is a TAP A and Vertex touch base, uh, yellow is a uh is a working group meeting. Um, and then blue is SBC meeting. So we've run from now through the end of December, knowing that. Right now, that's the current direction is 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 focusing on a submission to the MSBA for the PSR um. Um, in December. For a February board meeting. Um, it's a tight timeframe, but it's achievable. It's definitely aggressive. Um, when we talked about also as we get further down into the end of October and November is really kind of communicating that to the public. We've introduced a, these are just some suggestions, and we can talk about what these public forum. Uh, fora look like. Um, you know, we've done some in the past at the middle school, high school, uh, library, um, as as starting point, but there may be some some meetings that need to occur. Uh, further out in the community, whether it's with. Uh, with seniors or at the library or some other public function, even if it's a. A smaller uh meet and greet type situation that's less formal. Um, so we introduced a couple of suggestions in terms of where those might fit into the schedule. Um, obviously, working with. A pretty um constricted timeframe. Um, and also knowing that, you know, there's holidays and elections that we need to work around uh over the next few months. Um, and this all leads up to um, uh, the. Billis Fall Town Meeting, not that this is on the agenda for that, on the warrant for that, but. Um, obviously, there's going to be some feedback that may come out of that uh town meeting. Um, and then as we get into uh. December, assuming we still, we still are proceeding coming out of that Fall Town Meeting without slowing down. Uh, we probably want to do one last public forum. Followed by a either a an SBC meeting and then a a sort of tribe board meeting or just a tribe board meeting with. The um, this this SBC, uh, the select board and the school committee. Um, really to kind of select the preferred and vote on the preferred alternate. Um, and then also vote to submit that uh along with the final submission to. Um. The MSBA. The deadline for that is December nineteenth. Uh, if we're going to make the February uh board meeting. So it's it's an aggressive schedule, it's it's um achievable, um, but we need to be. Fully committed as a group. Um, you know, this this requires everybody to be paying attention and and really engaged. Uh, throughout the next uh three months, um, to get a lot of meetings and a lot of uh public outreach. Um, to surface, you know, uh, feedback from the community. Um, making making sure we're listening to the community and that, um, you know, we're presenting them with the information they need to inform us on their opinions.
Hi, Jim, I have a question, which is governance question. When we sent, going back to the end of the line, and when we send this. Recommendation to the MSBA board. Okay, who sends it and who has to vote for it?
So, um, basically, this uh, this committee. Um, votes on its preferred option and recommends that option.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. This committee means the school building.
School building committee, yep, sorry, I should have been more specific. The school building committee votes on its preferred option. Um, and they make that recommendation. To the school committee and the and the select board for their sort of ratification.
Okay.
Um, ultimately, um, you know, the the uh, the select board is the one that I believe, uh, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, and the select board is the one that's the official. Um.
No, it's actually, for this vote, it's actually the school building committee at the preferred schematic level.
Okay.
The MSBA's language is vague, because every town has a different governance, so. It it says the school building committee and then any other required votes, right? So like. Some towns, school building committees don't have a lot of authorities, other towns, they actually have very strong standing. And so it's the school building committee that makes the vote, and then we use the word endorsement. For all the cities and towns we work with, because we do want to show the strong showing that it has the support of the other. Elected bodies of school committee and select board. And so that's the way we kind of phrase it as the endorsement of the SBC's recommendation, but the. The regs are written around the SBC making the recommendation.
Gotcha. That answer your question, Jim?
That's what I thought, just wanted to confirm it.
Yeah, but when we get to the final schematic design, like, because that's the final deal essentially. Which would be next, you know, June timeframe. If we were to stay on this track, you know, that would want to pick up the select board, because they're the ones that have the authority to essentially uh enter into an agreement.
Right, right.
Contractual agreement, yeah.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I I understand. I'm just trying to get to this December fourth, you know, there's. Question mark, question mark, question mark. We got, somebody has to take a vote. To send recommendations to.
The reason I put that question mark is is so. You know, and and these two sort of go hand in hand, or they could go together. Um, so the the fourth. You know, ultimately, the first vote is from this uh school building committee. You know, you you guys vote to to get your recommendation. To Jeff's point, we want it, we want the support of the select board and the school committee. Um, and so that can occur in a single meeting if you can get all three bodies to get a quorum. Or it can occur in separate meetings, and that's why I sort of had a question mark there is it's really. You know, up to you on how you want to handle that and up to the three uh, three boards.
So, Mike, just for clarity, because we use tri board as an actual board and it's. Or me, there are tri board meetings that are the select board, the school committee, and the finance committee. So this document is referencing. If this is referencing school committee. School building committee and select board, that let's. Uh, just for.
Yeah, we'll clean that up and get that, make that adjusted. To Mike's point, we've done it. Every which way in all the towns.
Yeah, no, I I get, and it, but at first I was, and then I figured out what you were talking about, and I was like.
Yeah, no, sorry to confuse you. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, we'll use the three acronym, the three appropriate acronyms. So in the the community engagement like that that is proposed the end of October and early November is just again. People naturally come together at town meeting and talk, right? I think it's important to have. A status update, right? Because not everybody's been paying attention since. Um, you know, June, everybody went on autopilot over the summer, so there are probably many people in town, and I know, talking to friends I have in your town, they don't necessarily know. That you guys took the step back. And are looking at the more granular options. So I think it's important to educate the public that. You've you took a step back, you looked at a much wider catchment of options. You're still in the narrowing, you're still collecting feedback. And kind of getting that information out there. So I do think. A couple of public forums, you know, in whatever fashion you guys are comfortable or important in that, you know, late October and any time in November timeframe.
Denise, what would you think about those? I mean, how would you, how would you think those were, those uh public forums would be handled?
Um. I think that they would be similar to the outline that that Vertex has put in there, which is. So what's been happening since the last time we spoke, right? Because to Jeff's point, there's been a lot. So to give, to bring them up to speed. Now, I think by the time we would go to public forum, we wouldn't have all of those options as, I think, I think. I think us as a committee may have our preferred, and then we are presenting like. So here's what the committee has discussed and reviewed, but we heard your feedback about costs, so. We slowed the process so that we can look at more. Uh, reduced scope options to see where those priced out. And then I think it's, you know, I think we're updating people on why we're thinking what we are, which. It's still TBD because we haven't gotten to that point yet, but. Just give updates to folks so that they can be aware. Um, we've had some conversations. Um, as school committee, because we also have the override vote that's happening in November, and everybody's. On the school, everybody on the school committee is aligned that we need to be talking about both. So the town needs to be educated and updated on what's going on with the school building. The timing works out nicely for us because. We get to focus on override until about the end, publicly, until about mid to end of October. And then we can start to weave in the school building project discussion. So that people have had a couple of opportunities to hear the update prior to town meeting. So I I'm um. I'm supportive of. What the options are on the table, and I think it's. You know, we're telling the public the process that we've gone through and then walking them through why whatever our recommended option is, how how we got there. Why we think it's the best fit for the town.
No, that sounds great. I think the other thing is just be more. Uh, practical is I think we need to start thinking about locations, you know, what what what's the plan on, hey, you know, we've got, you know, handful of uh. You know, working groups, if we needed, if we're thinking about the library, or if you wanted to do it, you know, somewhere, I think we need to start thinking about, you know. Spaces and things like that, just logistically wise.
Yeah, and I think Je- Jeff alluded to it, but I do think it would be important for us. To go to COA and to reach out to folks at the Glenn to see if they would. Be open to having a conversation. Maybe they want a full presentation, maybe they don't, maybe they just want to sit and. Have a Q and A, but we, um, I'd be happy to engage in that conversation and. Have an open dialogue with them to give them an opportunity to. You know, not maybe they can get their own, they can have their own session, or happily go over to. At the Glenn to to meet folks there. So I think there's a couple, like like Jeff had said earlier, in addition to the ones that are on the schedule. I think that it, I think we should reach out to COA and see if there's a time that we can come and talk to them. I do think that we need to get through the month of September and our additional discussions. Before we have those, because we're 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 not at a point yet where we have our message. So as soon as we have that, then we need to have things lined up. So Mike, can you scroll up a little bit for me, just on the earlier date? Um, okay, so the twenty third. So do we think at the twenty third SBC meeting that we're exiting that meeting with. Sort of, at least from a committee perspective. Less options. That are in play than the ones we reviewed tonight, if that's question number one. And question number two is. Are we exiting that meeting also with our preferred option as a SBC?
Well, I think I I think, you know, and I'll let Jeff answer this, but I think um, I definitely think we should. Pair some down. Uh, you you know, we've had a conversation earlier that, you know, if you give too much information, um. You know, it it may confuse people, uh, having the, not saying that we want to hide the information, but we could put, you know, hey. You know, these are a couple of options that we're really interested in, still have the other information around. Um, and then I think on the preferred option, I think, Jeff, we have to wait on that uh on our preferred option till later, correct?
Thoughts on that to the group, right? I mean, you know, if you guys know with certainty, you know, you want to make your top recommendation uh in the next couple of meetings, we can certainly do that. You know, you may choose to go with a ranking, right? That, you know, you, once you go through the process, you know, the goal was to have. Two meetings, you know, the second and third week of October or whatever we've shown here, if that works for folks. To kind of talk through it, to have the natural guy dialogue. You guys may agree or disagree. On whatever the preferred option is, but but having that conversation allows the right ones to rise to the top one or two positions. And then you can either bring that back to the public to say that, you know, you've made your rankings, but you have not made your recommendation. You know, I think that allows you to collect legitimate feedback from the public. And then still take your vote in December after you've heard all the. and then still take your vote in December after you've heard all the feedback. Um, so that may be because they're so varied, you know, that may be better in this type of, uh, situation versus coming with a clear focused, this is, this is the one and why, uh, but I think, you know, top two, you know, maybe, may play better, uh, with this audience, but you guys know your taxpayers. You know, you, you, you have a better sense than I do.
And, and I, I agree with you. I think when we did this before with the Clyde Brown, we, you know, we did do, go through and did, did a straw poll. Um, and I think that was helpful, um, to whittle it down. So I think that might be something we wanna consider doing in the next meeting or two is to work our way down.
Jeff, I have a quick question for you. Are we to assume that the first three options are not gonna get any participation from the state? Are we just gonna go with that?
Definitely with the first one. Um, you know, I will try and get, you know, between now and, and your next meeting, three weeks from now, I'll try and get more information now that we've drawn them, you know, but before we hadn't drawn anything.
Okay.
You know, Chris and Mike will, will work with Bob to try and see what's missing from the head plan, cause like, once we're armed with that, you know, we can kinda have a, a sense about what won't be participated in with the renovation R two and R three, but certainly there's less likely, you know, with, with R two, um, than the other ones, um, but we've not ruled out yet.
Okay, that's number one. And number two, Denise, when you take this show on the road for maybe the Glen and maybe the COA, are you at the same time going to be talking about the override?
Um.
Because.
I think, I, I think we'll have to, but we're gonna be, I think we're gonna have to.
Yes.
We're gonna be really close to the time, the timing, um. Because by the time we get through having a message on this project, so, so the short answer to your question is yes. But, but the time is gonna be tight up to the, up to the override vote, because we're not gonna get through this part of our process. So the third, second to last, if that's the same thing, week in October. So, yeah.
I suggest to do the council on aging and Glen Ellen for the override, almost as a standalone and then come back and.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it's the Glen, one and the other for the override.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and generally you wanna try and keep them separate. I mean, you know, I know there's a lot of you that are overlapping multiple boards in town, but I think you want you wanna appropriately separate them because one is about operating what you have and the other one is about replacing the infrastructure that's aging, right? And they're, they're both important discussions, but.
Well, can I just state it just from the point of view of the.
About one, it's gonna lead the door to the other. Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, but I mean, from the point of view of the SBC, okay, we're not ready to tell people any more than just an update. I don't want, I don't think we're ready to go to them and won't be ready really. Uh, October twenty-third is what? Twelve days before election day. So if we're trying to jam in some meetings at these various venues and having multiple messages, I think you're gonna confuse people. I don't mean if you go there and you say, we're here to talk about the operational concerns and the override and you're ready to answer questions about the building, eh, that's fine. But to try and weave them together before, before the SBC has even voted, I don't think is a good idea.
Um, I, I don't. I, I agree. I think that's where, I think that's where we landed.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, the first forum, the twenty-ninth, uh, or thereabouts was meant to be more of the traditional one you've already done, which is, you know, recorded, you know, live and in person at the library or wherever you guys choose to do it at the high school and a general update accessible to all. And then I think after that first one, we work out the kinks of that presentation, we, we, it's out there. Then you kinda do more of the nimble conversations, you know, through the month of November.
But what is the conversation? I mean, cause I think there's two different things here. And if the school committee wants to go to these outside venues and try to promote the override, I, I would support their efforts. It has nothing to do with the SBC.
Yeah, yeah, there, so override separate from school building project. School building project discussion with COA and the Glen, for sure. And then in discuss, so school committee is in discussions about going to other groups in town, talk about the override, which would happen before we even, to your point, which would hap, those discussions would happen well before we've even decided on what our message would be about the school building project. So not to get, message would not be together, it would be separate.
Well, I think that's the right way to go.
Me too. I, I think that you'd have to be ready to answer questions if they come up, but it's not a presentation.
The only thing I would add is you want to, I, my recommendation is we wanna engage some level capital planning committee who will theoretically include some comment on this particular project for its report to town meeting on November seventeenth or whenever the date is. So I think in the ordinary course of business, we need to bring them into the conversation. But we need to understand what they are prepared to talk about in their report, because people will see that.
No, that's fine. And also the FinCom had expressed interest in, um, in paying attention to that, well, not paying attention, but being able to weigh in on the meetings. Uh, they happened to be, uh, meeting tonight at the same time, so we forwarded our um, meeting schedule, so they're aware of it, so we can take a look at that.
Well, I guess what I would like to suggest, if you're okay with it, Rich, is for you to do an outreach or Kim to the capital planning committee and ask them for an opportunity to just talk to them at one of their meetings.
Sure, that, that sounds fine, um.
There's a bunch of meetings coming up in October, so there's no urgency.
Okay. All right, I can reach out to the capital planning and see if they would like us to come and, and chat.
But Jim, there's no, there's no formal process where they need to make a report based on this project at this town meeting, right? You're just saying that's a nice to have, aren't you?
No, the ta, the capital planning committee is responsible for reporting to the town on current and planned project.
So there's got, they need a year mark, yeah, alright.
So there is a, there is an outstanding report which has, I think, a ninety million dollar number in it that was issued in May. And again, the, the wording is very tentative because we have nothing to go on. We need also on that committee, but in any event, you gotta assume they're gonna wanna say something.
Yeah, but no, thank you for clarifying.
I don't wanna ignore them, that's all.
No, thank you. Alright, so if this rough outline works for the group, you know, uh, we'll work with Denise and Rich to kinda refine some of the dates and, you know, filter in a few more of these pink ones. Uh, and that, you know, you have all the materials we have tonight, you know, we'll, we're gonna look at, you know, uh, getting some updated numbers on this as well. So right now only TAP A is kinda priced these options. Um, you know, we're gonna bring our estimator in the month of October and try and refine that before you, you're, you're in your narrowing phase. We can kinda bring that in a little bit. Many of the cost conversations usually happen a long time from now, but there may be certain ones that we kinda wanna dial up a little sooner. Um, to tighten up some of these numbers and ranges so that you guys feel more confident as we start to talk to the public at large.
Yeah.
All right, uh, yeah, no, I mean, I think that, you know, you, we've got a schedule, I, obviously we may fiddle with things on dates, but, um, we gotta start somewhere. So I would say let's go with your document and we'll start from there.
Mike, was there anything else we had to talk about from up, that I missed, you know?
No, I think the, the, just wanna confirm, so if we go by this schedule, the next SBC meeting would be October ninth. Um, so that would be three weeks from today. I just wanna make sure, you know, people have a chance to look at their calendars if there's, uh, any, any significant conflicts with that. I'm seeing some no head shaking, so that's a good sign.
Seven thirty again?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's what we've been planning on, yep.
Yeah, I'll be a little late to that, Mike, but you can, uh, check your crazy through.
So, yeah, and again, if we, if we stick to what our work plan is currently, basically, we would start to introduce the evaluation matrix we've talked about in the past where we would wanna probably start talking about the criteria for evaluating these options as we start to list the options along, you know, one part of the scale and then start to measure each of those options against the criteria. So, uh, before that happens, um, we'll probably wanna recirculate that, uh, matrix and, and maybe some um, some ideas or thoughts about how other towns have looked at criteria, but, um, if there's anything specific that you think each of the, each of the options should be weighed against, some criteria you think should be weighed against, um, by all means, share that before next, uh, next meeting.
And we're required to do that because the MSBA wants to see how, no?
It's not a requirement, it's a standard practice for us.
Okay.
Um, that, um, we've found successful as a way to, um, you know, help towns not only realize their own preferences, but also communicate it back to the public on why certain options were chosen and others were discarded.
All right, I think, um, if that's it for you, Jeff, uh, you're muted. Um, um, I think we, we wanted to, we could probably move on to the other part of our meeting.
Yeah, not said, I think the only thing was invoices Kim has, but.
Yeah, and that's, yep, that's what I was gonna go through next.
Rich, I, I'll make a motion to adjourn this whiteboard meeting if we don't need to be here for the, uh, other part.
Good idea.
Don't. Okay, uh, second.
Okay, call for a vote and we're done.
We're done.
All right, good night. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Pull the board.
Pull the board.
Okay, yeah, bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Um, can everybody see that? The TAP A invoice?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that, we have TAP A invoice for the month of August and the amount of six thousand five hundred forty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Yep, I make a motion that we approve the invoice for TAP A uh, for the work in August for the amount of six thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-three cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, uh, do I have to do it by, I don't have to, do I have to do it by roll call? We can just do it by voice. Um, second invoice would be Vertex.
Yep, second invoice is Vertex for, for the month of August as well, um, and the amount is one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Yep, so I make a motion that we approve the, um, invoice for Vertex for work in the month of August for the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I did wanna think, um, that Vertex actually had this, uh, where they had broken it up into pieces, um, and they were willing to, Jeff was nice enough to bill us just for what they did, um, so that actually kinda, you know, it was nice to stretch it out versus trying, hitting us for the full amount, which was, I do appreciate that, Jeff, thank you. Um, next item, uh, the agenda would be to review and approve minutes.
So, so the minutes are from August fifteenth.
Yep, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes from August fifteenth as written.
Okay.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passed unanimously. Um, and I think we're down to adjournment, which is nice. Um, was there anything else anyone had? Okay, all right, um, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, motion's made, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, great. Hey, John, um, John McDonough, um, if, after you're done, maybe give me a ring tomorrow, we can just touch base.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Jim didn't scare you away, did he?
No.
Away asked a lot of questions, he didn't scare you?
Yeah, I, I think he likes to be thorough, it's alright.
It's good. All right, great. Thanks again, thanks for coming.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Bye now.
Good night.
Good night.